I would like to call the East Amwell Township Land Use Board to order, and next is the flag salute.
Okay, if everybody would stand to pledge allegiance to the flag. I will move it closer to the camera.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic which stands. Nation under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all. Okay. All right. Krista, do you want to do roll call?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, this is a regular scheduled meeting pursuant to annual meeting notice that was published in the January 16th, 2020 issue of the Hunter County Democrat. A copy of the agenda was forwarded to the Hunter County Democrat filed in the township clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board and township website on April 3rd. Mark Castellano.
Here.
Francis Gavigan.
Here.
Tamara Lee.
Here.
John Mills.
Here.
Mike Mills.
He's muted.
Mike, you're on mute.
Mike Mills. Jason Silverthorne.
Here.
Tim Willey.
Here.
Rick Wolf.
Here.
Gail Glasshoff.
Here.
John Ceramba.
He's muted.
Sean, you're muted.
Here.
Thank you.
Elena Gable. Bill Burr. Yolanta Maziarz.
Here.
That's it.
Okay, review of the agenda.
I said that the agenda.
Okay, on the addendum, one thing is Maria's resignation that was effective as of Monday. That's why we have Krista here tonight. Okay.
Was there any reason for her resignation? Did she give a reason or?
We can discuss that when we get to it under new business.
Okay.
Okay, now, I mean, the next thing is citizens' privilege to speak. Do we have anybody on here from the public?
We've got Kathy.
I don't think we got through the review of the agenda. Krista is going to give us the review of the agenda.
Well, I sent out an addendum to the agenda and it was posted to the website. Do you want me to go down the list?
Probably.
Yes, yes, do that. Thank you.
So, new business on number three is resignation of Planning Board Administrator Marion Andrews effective April 6th. Under unfinished business, we're going to remove the master plan review as no discussion will be held. And we're adding three vouchers for consideration of approval tonight.
Okay, I have a question. Under the unfinished business for the master plan, we're not having discussion. Why was it taken off?
We just haven't done enough to, there's not enough to discuss.
Okay, I thought you were going to be ready for tonight.
I'm still working with Elena and we're trying to coordinate some things. And make sure, we just don't, we haven't been able to coordinate as much as we wanted to for our first presentation.
Will it be shared with the board?
Of course.
So will you be ready for the next meeting?
I haven't coordinated with Elena yet. I don't know. I can certainly let you know before the next meeting.
Well, I guess you can still keep it and then update us, Cam, about where you're at with it when we get to it.
Okay.
If that's what you want to do.
Sure.
And then we're not discussing it now, we'll discuss it still under unfinished business.
Okay.
So we'll keep it under unfinished business and then you'll provide an update.
Right.
It's here in unfinished business as a status update, so that's all it is. It's a status update.
Yeah, so keep it.
Okay, the next is presentation of minutes from March 11th.
So now you have to open to the public, Gail.
Oh, I had asked you, is there public on there? I'm just asking. Is there anybody that's on there?
Kathy and an applicant.
I know that, I know that, but I'm just asking, do you have anybody who has signed on from the public?
Yes.
Okay. Then I want a motion. All right, I would like a motion to open to the public.
I move we open to the public.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, you said, Rick, you said there's a couple of people that are on here?
Yes.
Does anybody from the public want to speak? No.
I make a motion to close.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next on the agenda is the presentation of minutes. I understand we have some changes to the minutes that Rick made. You want to explain why you had to make these changes?
Because I thought that the minutes as drafted did not accurately reflect what was said, so I made a few changes.
Well, you can't really reword stuff like that.
Well.
I mean, I read it and it's.
I'll defer to our attorney on that as to whether or not I can comment on if our administrator got the minutes wrong.
Yes, any member of the planning board can comment, and minutes, minutes are not supposed to be a verbatim record anyway. They are supposed to be reasonably comprehensible, so they are supposed to, they're supposed to capture the gist of what happened at the meeting. So if any member of the planning board believes that they were incorrect in any way, then they should submit their corrections to the board secretary and the minutes should be corrected. One of the challenges with this is that there was no audio of last month's meeting to where one could go and review what was said and exactly, and I don't know if the audio from the legal recorder is posted on the website or not. When I try to go in and get into things within the township website, it's not accessible. So perhaps I at least would like to maybe get a copy of the download from the We Recorder, whatever it is, since that's the legal record. Well, the only time that you're required to make a legal record, that has to be a permanent record, is during a hearing, and there were not any hearings.
Correct.
There was just a resolution on, and there were a couple of discussion items, but there were no application hearings. Yeah, but traditionally, at least over 25 years, the recording, since we're normally in a building with the court reporter thing, it's always been that the minutes were retained, and for the last couple of years at least, they'd be posted on the drive, so I would ask that they be posted so that if somebody wanted to hear it, they could hear it. Well, the minutes absolutely have to be posted. They have to be kept and they have to be posted, but an actual transcript or a hearing a recording of a meeting, you don't have to keep that for posterity as long as you have the minutes, and these are. I have, excuse me, Yolanta, I don't mean to interrupt, but I have got audio discs filed for various meetings going back 15 to 20 years, and the tradition within the township has been that the audio portion of a meeting is available. Sure, well, that's a great, that's a great tradition to have in terms of transparency, although in terms of legality, I can only speak to legality, and the minutes, if you don't have a recording for some reason, because it got lost, because, you know, someone did something with the recording for a meeting like this, what's legally required is these minutes. And the board members that were there are all allowed to opine on what the minutes should say, because they were all there and recall.
Yolanta, it's John. I just want to ask a question.
Sure.
If somebody says a word, let's just say, I'm just making this up, eat, and then they want to change, and they say, oh, I made a mistake what I was saying in the meeting, are they allowed to change that word?
Well, no, I mean, you can't change the context. I mean, you can't, you know, if you're talking about eating, you can't turn it into drinking.
Right. Okay.
But I went through some of, you know, I went through all of the changes, and the only thing that was changed was it just makes things more specific. For instance, the minutes say he indicated he would like to rezone. He indicated the township is considering rezoning. That is an articulation of what happened, and it's not really changing anything. It's articulating it more precisely, more clearly, so that the public understands what was going on.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
Okay, if there isn't any more discussion, I would like a motion to either approve or deny the minutes as posted.
As corrected.
Okay, as corrected.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the minutes as corrected.
I'll second.
Do we have it? Okay, I would like to have a roll call vote on this, if it's okay, considering there were many changes.
Well, there weren't many changes, but I don't object to a.
Well, there was enough, Rick, that I want a roll call vote.
I said I don't object to a roll call vote. I was just simply correct you that there were not a lot of changes.
But before you do the roll call vote, I'm just looking at the last page, page four again, and it appears in the, oh my goodness, I'm looking, under the bold title, Request by the Township Committee Regarding a Master Plan Review, about the third line down in the middle, it says, Mr. Wolf stated that the Township Committee would like the planning board to start sooner than 2022, and it was turned to 2023. I just want to make sure that that is correct.
It is correct. Our last, our last master plan review was in 2013.
That's why. Okay, understood. When does our master plan due?
2023.
It's every 10 years.
Every 10 years.
Can I ask if anybody was missing at last month's meeting that cannot vote on these minutes and didn't review them? Because I wasn't there.
I wasn't there.
Tam, you weren't there?
Yes, yeah. Tamara is the only one that was absent, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so Mr. Castellano.
Yes.
Ms. Gavigan?
I'm going to abstain because I don't have access to a recording and I have not, you know, if it's purely, you know.
Okay, Ms. Lee?
Good thing.
John Mills?
Yes.
Mike Mills?
Yes.
Jason Silverthorne?
Yes.
Tim Willey?
Yes.
Rick Wolf?
Yes.
Gail Glasshoff?
No.
And then John Ceramba?
Yeah.
It was under yes?
Yeah.
Did you get Mark?
Mark was number one.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, that concludes the roll call, Gail.
Okay. All right. All right, we don't have any resolutions to approve, but wasn't there, oh, that's under what, new business?
Where they, yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, the consistency review? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, no, I mean, the next item was resolutions for approval, but there aren't any, but we do have the one for John Higgins that'll be coming up.
Yes.
So under new business, for new business applications-other is the Consistency Review Ordinance 20-07, an ordinance amending Section 9251 driveways of the Code of East Amwell Township. So whoever had this put on the agenda, would they, you know, speak to this?
Maria put it on the agenda because we're revising the ordinance at the Township Committee.
Oh, all right. I didn't know whether or not Rick had anything to say on the subject, considering it, you know, with the Township Committee.
Well, my understanding is that it's not even clear that this needs to be on the agenda, but because it was in Section 92 of our code, which deals with land use, we decided that as a matter of caution, we would bring it to the planning board for a consistency review. But essentially, this was an ordinance that was proposed by the Township Committee at the request of our DPW supervisor. And under the prior version of the ordinance, our DPW was charged with installing any drainage pipe under new driveways. And our DPW supervisor requested that we change this so that it is on the applicant to install that drainage pipe if it is putting in a new driveway that cuts into one of our roads. If you want more detail, I'm happy to let Jason speak because he is here.
Okay, Jason, do you have anything to add?
No, no, it's just simply removing the DPW's responsibility to install the driveway pipes. Because, one, I can't always do it when they need me to do it. It'd be pulling me away from road work. Two, we don't have a paver to pave the aprons as nice as a contractor would. And I think, three, at times, the $2,500 bond wouldn't cover the cost of materials and time that we'd have to put into it.
Do you still have the obligation to, like, approve it and inspect it?
Yes, yep, yep. The only thing that's taken out is that we install the pipe. It's put back on the landowner to hire a contractor to put in the pipe that's described by me or the engineer.
Makes sense.
And it's all up to your specifications, right, Jason?
Yeah, yeah, because some, you know how our roads are, some need, you know, 18-inch pipes, some need a 12-inch pipe, some don't need any pipes, some need a swale, some need that, you know, it's all depending on.
The base is covered, you know, underneath and everything else like that. That's all up to you, so.
Yeah, and we put a set number in there for the apron to be paved in off the edge of the road instead of the center line, because the roads vary in width so much.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay, well, then, since this will be going back to, is this on the agenda, Krista, for tomorrow night?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, I'd like to have a motion to send it back to the Township Committee for, I take it they'll have their, what, public hearing on this?
That's correct.
Okay. So can I have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we've done the consistency review and that it be forwarded to the Township Committee for their consideration tomorrow night.
I'll second.
Can I, okay.
Yolanta, you want to say something?
Yes, so what the planning board is finding is that this ordinance is not inconsistent with the township's master plan, correct? Yes, that was my intention. Thank you.
Okay.
I got you, Tam.
All right, considering this is for a public hearing tomorrow. Why can't we do a roll call, considering what it is?
Okay, okay.
We need a roll call.
Yeah.
Okay. Mark Castellano.
Yes.
Francis Gavigan?
Yes.
Tamara Lee?
Yes.
John Mills?
Yes.
Mike Mills? Jason Silverthorne?
Yes.
Tim Willey?
Yes.
Rick Wolf?
Yes.
And Gail Glasshoff?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the John Higgins of the New Jer, and slash, New Jersey Conservation Foundation. And this is for, he's looking for, it's a minor subdivision, extension of time to file and perfect the minor reconfiguration of easements.
Yes. I looked at it and read through, and they had the justification because of the way the funders were. They came to an agreement with the county on how they would handle that, and I think the county bought the right of way with fee simple. I didn't see anything that I would have an issue with. Do we have the applicant's attorney on the phone or the applicant's?
I am on the call. This is James Wise. I represent New Jersey Conservation Foundation. It might be helpful if I just very briefly outline what occurred since last May when the subdivision was originally approved. At that time, we did not yet have a final resolution of the county's planning board review. So that proceeded. The property owner, Mr. Higgins, determined to appeal a portion of the county planning board's decision, which was that the county was demanding that the road frontage, the right-of-way area, be given without any monetary compensation. Unfortunately, that meant that my client would not be able to pay for that land because public money isn't available through the Green Acres Program for that particular purpose. So anyway, that proceeded, the Mr. Higgins and the county reached an amicable settlement of that. And as a result, that the rights of way along the road, one had been increased from a total of 50 feet to 75 feet. There are two parts of that. One is a 25-foot area for road widening and also a 50-foot wide area for slope easements and grading. So we have a wider total area along the road. And rather than giving an easement, the county will be purchasing that land outright. So the upshot of that is that the, of course, the lines along Wurtsville Road have been redrawn after we just submitted. And the resulting acreage of the two new lots is slightly smaller. The new acreages are listed in the chart. It's on the plan. I have them here if you'd like me to recite them, but they are on the plan.
Can you recite them, please, for the record?
Absolutely. Now, the existing Lot 2 is a total of 264.931 acres. Now, you might notice that that's about seven tenths of an acre more than it was last May. And no, the property did not grow in the meantime. What happened is that our surveyor was surveying for the Conservation Foundation, the Wurtsville Industries tract next door, and discovered a surveying, a survey issued. There was some, I don't know exactly what it was, but there was an inconsistency. And in the process of resolving that, it turned out that the Higgins site is actually almost .7 acres bigger than we thought it was originally. So that's the reason for that discrepancy. So New Lot 2.02 is 16.489 acres. New Lot 2.01 is 243.843 acres. And the area that's going to be conveyed to Hunter County is 4.599 acres. Now, I also want to mention that in reviewing the May 8 resolution in anticipation of this meeting, we've noticed that there were some typographical errors in the original resolution that I think it would behoove us to correct at this time. One is that there are several places where it's referred to as Lot 32 instead of Lot 2. It appears a few times in the beginning of the resolution, including the title block. So perhaps we could correct that.
Absolutely.
And in addition, the acreages originally recited were, there were some typographical errors in those as well. I don't know if you know, that paragraph is going to stay. If it does, then those, they should be corrected. So, but I assume that that'll be done in the normal course, so we have the new correct acreage numbers. I think Lisa McCallum is on the line. Lisa, were there any other?
No, no, that was it. That was it, Jim.
Thank you. And then the other aspect of our request is to extend the deadline for perfecting the subdivision, which the original 190 days expired in November, I believe. So we would request that that be extended one year from the original expiration date, which would give us until next November, at which point we should be in a position to close title. Obviously, the reason we weren't able to do it sooner was that this planning board proceeding in the county was still playing itself out. Does anyone have any questions for us about the nature of our request or any of the changes in the plans?
Well, one thing I'd like to say is the fact, we apologize for the fact that, you know, about these errors that were in it from, you know, from last time as far as the lots and numbers and stuff.
No problem.
We apologize for not picking them up.
I'd also just like to say, as an aside, that I'd like to salute you all for managing to continue public business in these difficult circumstances.
Yes.
It's a favor to all of us, and I'm sure it's not very convenient for you all.
All right, Yolanta F., okay, so do you agree, I mean, we can give him, you know, until next November? I don't see a problem with it, I mean, personally myself, but I just, I want your opinion. Okay.
In accordance with the municipal annual law, and that's 4555, 40:55D-47 in subsection G, the planning board shall grant an extension of 12 months from what would otherwise be the expiration date of the time to file the subdivision deed or perfect the subdivision deed if the applicant can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that they were impeded from doing so by an outside agency, and I think that in this case, the applicant certainly was, was impeded by the county, actually, and the county proceedings, and that's why this happened. So an extension, I believe, can be granted under under this subsection G. I just need to ask that in this case, if you're going to ask for an extension under G, the applicant has to either ask for the extension before the date of the expiration or before the 91st day after the developer receives the necessary approval from that outside agency. So are you within that time?
I don't think they've actually signed the final agreement yet.
Okay, okay, so you are within that, the 91 days.
As far as I know, yes.
As far as you know, okay. Okay, so you're within that time, so I think that the planning board can grant this for that 12-month period from November until the next November.
Okay, all right. Does anybody have any questions or anything before we take a vote on this? Okay, not hearing from anybody. I'd like to have a motion to grant the the one-year extension to November. What's the actual date would be from our meeting date in November, correct? Yolanta?
It was 190 days from the memorialized resolution in May. So whenever the resolution was memorialized in May, 190 days from there was about, I guess, November, beginning of November, or something like that.
The resolution was adopted in May 8, so I'm sorry, I didn't calculate the 190 days I should have, but it would be one year from the original expiration date.
Exactly, which would have been around November, 190 days.
Yeah.
Months and 10 days. Is that correct?
Yes.
10 days, so somewhere in the middle of November. Right.
Well, we should really have a date.
November eighteen, I believe. I believe it's November eighteenth. If we're counting one hundred-and-ninety days from, you know, okay. What, the board can say a hundred-and-ninety days from the memorialized resolution from that November until the next November, we will figure out what that exact date is. We all know what we're talking about here.
About, okay.
So I won't calculate that date exactly.
Okay, I would like a motion to that effect?
I move that we approve the extension of time as just discussed with the actual specific date, to be clarified, but that, you know, that it be approved as has been discussed.
Excuse me, could we add to that the approval of the revisions to the subdivision plan?
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Definitely.
Yes, so you're also adding not only the revision to the plans that have now changed, but also the revisions to the previous resolutions, the previous resolution that will be memorialized in the new resolution, because the old resolution will stay in this chain, but we'll have a new memorialized resolution that will correct whatever typographical errors we had in the previous resolution.
Okay, all right, could I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Ms. Gavigan?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
John Mills?
Yes.
Mike Mills? And Mr. Silverthorne?
Yes.
Mr. Willie?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Glassoff?
Yes. All right. All right, then. Okay, we'll be moving on to our next item.
Thank you, Jim and Lisa.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Good night.
Good luck.
Good night. All right, under oral reports, FOSB, Rick, is that you? Because there's no names next to it.
Before that is the chair, so I will defer to him.
Would this be where item number three that was added to the agenda of the resignation be discussed?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry about that, Krista.
That was Frances.
Frances.
Oh, okay. All right. Is there any questions or discussion or anything on the resignation?
Again, I asked the question as to what was the main reason why she resigned. I was taken by surprise when I saw it in the addendum. Any discussion?
She resigned because she felt she wasn't the right fit for the planning board.
All right. I think we should have a motion to accept her resignation if there's no more discussion.
I mean, we will accept her resignation with regrets and thank her for her service.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, now we'll move on to oral reports. Rick, that's you for FOSB, right?
It's Mike Mills.
Okay.
Nothing major to report at this moment.
Mike, it's hard to hear you.
There's nothing major to report at this moment.
Okay. Environmental Commission?
I was contacted after there was a conversation with the mayor and others by Joe, who's the other person on the environmental site review committee, asking about applications. And I responded to him that we had the three, the Tabby's Place, the solar application on Lynnvale Road, and the application for the post office site. And I told him I did have the information from it, so that if he wanted to look at the file and the records, at least as of March, he was welcome to. I have not heard anything from him about setting up a time. I think he's busy disinfecting buildings in New York from COVID.
Okay. Krista, do you have anything you want to say under PB Secretary? I know you just jumped into this, but...
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. All I want to say is the fact I was, I was disappointed, but I understood why she was resigning. But that's about it. Okay, all right. Under unfinished business, I know this is off, but Tamara, did you want to say something for, you know, giving the board any idea about when we might be dealing with this at board, or what? With the planning, with the master plan review?
Okay, Elena and I have spoken, which we've talked about the work that has to be done in advance of starting to talk about planning. I mean, we need to get some information from, you know, Vanish's office. They created a lot of information for the township, and we need some of that. We wanted basically collect a lot of background research. And I've started talking with Mike Mills about some of that. We're going to talk a little bit more tomorrow. But we're really just in the beginning phases where we're talking about, like I said, the research and the background that we're going to have to do to support any future discussions. So until we know where that's going, we really don't have a whole lot to present at this point.
Okay. All right. Correspondents, let's see, we have a letter dated three-ten from Mr. Stambro. It's regarding the solar, remember the solar application that we had? And apparently, they haven't, you know, put the trees in or any of the stuff they were supposed to, but then winter came, so I don't know. Did Mr. Stambro come tonight? I mean, is he on the, you know, from the audience? Oh, okay. All right, does anybody have any comments to make about the letter? Or how do you want to handle it?
I have a question since he's saying that they haven't done what they promised to do. And I think he was, there was, the way it read to me, it was somewhat frustrating, but that maybe our Krista or the building inspector or whomever should go out and see what's going on or not going on, or reach out to see what kind of timing could be given to him on addressing the issue that's supposed to be protecting him and that perhaps it be added for a discussion at the next month's meeting if it's not being resolved, or at least what the...
Well, it's...
No, I...
But one person at a time, please. It's...
Wait, wait.
Sorry.
Well, this is not really a planning board issue anymore. I mean, if they're not addressing the conditions of the approval, it's an enforcement issue. So it really should be the zoning officer that takes care of this. Planning board, you know, we really don't have a whole lot to do with it anymore.
No, I was just going to say that, thank you, Tamara. Planning board doesn't have jurisdiction over this. This is all township. So if a letter like this comes in, it should be directed to the township committee, who should be directing, as Tamara said, the zoning officer to go out and enforce the conditions of approval.
Well, I mean, I'm glad that it was brought to our attention, even though it's not our jurisdiction anymore, because it was part of the resolution and the conditions. So anyway, Krista, you know now you're the one that's going to be taking care of this. And then you can, can she report back to us, at least let us know what's going on, or what? Yolanta, what do you think?
You, you know, you can report back to the planning board with regard to, you know, what goes on with resolution compliance. I mean, we do do that in some towns, if that's something that the planning board would like to hear. Although, you know, if you do have a lot of applications, a lot of resolutions, and a lot of conditions, you're going to be hearing a lot of updates as well.
Fortunately, it's not rare enough.
We also have done, just a quick note, all constructions ending Friday regarding the executive order as well. So it still might be put a big halt on everything. But I'll look into it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if this actually... But my guess is that based on what we heard today on a call with the state, this sort of landscaping may not be shut down.
Right.
As Tam and Yolanta said earlier, this isn't a planning board issue. It's a township committee issue and a zoning officer issue. And the township committee and the zoning officer will address it.
Okay, next on the agenda is a letter, a copy of a letter from Mayor Wolf with an update on the pandemic. You got anything you want to add to your letter?
Well, I already did a subsequent update, and there will be future updates as necessary, including one either tonight or tomorrow dealing with property tax issues. But all I would say is continue to check the website on a daily basis for further updates.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Okay, I would like a motion and a second to open to the public.
I'll move to open to the public.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Is there any public that's present?
Mr. Pearl, do you want to say something?
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Mr. Pearl.
Nope. No, I'm fine, just checking in.
All right, thank you.
Nice to see you all.
You too.
Good to see you too.
Okay. All right, could I have a motion to close to the public at this time?
I'll move to close to the public.
I'll second.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is, from our addendum, is a presentation of the vouchers. We have three on there. The total coming to one-thousand-twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Are there any questions? Did you all get a chance to review the vouchers? Because I know Krista had, you know, Krista, you did send them, right? If I'm not mistaken?
I believe so.
Yes, yes, okay. If there aren't any questions on the vouchers, I would like a motion.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
The Tabby's Place voucher shows an hour and a half of engineering time reviewing the application, which comes to two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. This board decided some time ago that we were going to focus on customer service, that we were going to focus on trying to make the process easier and less expensive for the residents. We put in place an application review committee so that we could review these applications internally and make it easier and less costly for the applicants. Tabby's Place, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, I'm sure matters to them. They don't have this kind of money to be throwing around. Quite frankly, I think they just wasted two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. We should have done this internally. And so I would strongly encourage the application review committee to get through the applications and not force us to have to send these to the engineer. And if the application review committee cannot do that, then I think we ought to reconsider the composition of the application review committee.
May I speak to that? I think the application review committee met, and I think John, you were there, Gail, you were there, the others were not. And I know I went through the three applications, including Tabby's Place, which was quite complicated. It was within a week, I think, of us being aware of it. And then there was, apparently, there's also Tabby's Place had simultaneously, or prior to this, had submitted to the county and has gotten an approval from the county. I don't think the issue is so much getting through things. There were logistical issues because we were constricted, and I think I spoke with you, Mr. Mayor, that there were logistical issues that we were there at six and had to be out by seven-thirty. And thanks to that effect, and that was, you had indicated that that could be addressed in the future. I don't think it's the composition of it. I think it's three applications all at once. John was new to it, and, you know, the, I know, I've got the pile right here of what I went through and have a good sense of what it was. John, you were, is he still on the phone here? John, you were present that night, I think.
What's John you're talking about?
John Mills.
I was, yeah, I was there, yes.
You know, and a lot of the time was spent trying to let, help you understand what was a very complicated application by Tabby's Place with everything from pervious pavers to things to that extent. It was not a simple application. The other one, the solar, was, but it was appeared to be incomplete. And I think the engineer concurred with that. I don't know what the current status of things are. But I think let's see about the routing and the timing of doing it. And there were constraints at the time where people were believing that the only time we could get together and have access to the township was on a Tuesday night when it was open and then had to be out by seven-thirty. That's certainly not the case now with COVID-nineteen. It might change. But I think it's a little premature to be saying, oh, well, you shouldn't do this, that, or the other.
There were three applications, and there was an hour and a half, and the application review committee didn't get through a single application, and you just conceded that one of them was simple. So there's clearly a problem with the application review committee, and you can make all of the excuses in the world that you like. The point I'm making is we charged the application review committee with getting through the applications so that this process would be easier and less expensive for the residents. And it really bothers me that Tabby's Place has to waste two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to have an outside engineer do an application review that our application review committee should have been doing. And you can give me all the reasons and all the excuses, but there were three applications, an hour and a half, and not one got done, Frances. So I'm sorry, but I have an issue with this.
I will provide the timeline and also the comments that I had when the decision was made at the last planning board meeting to send things off to the engineer. The issues with the solar application, I did not forward on because it was going to be handled by that. And I believe I was also criticized after the meeting for having said what I said to the applicant. So let's see how it goes in the future, and maybe the whole board can sort of have an opinion. Not everyone was there.
Well, also, I mean, Tabby's Place is not a simple application that the review committee can go through it and deem it complete or incomplete. So it doesn't really make any difference. It was going to them, it was going to have to go to the engineer regardless. And I'm sorry if you don't understand that, Rick.
No, what I understand is that an hour and a half was spent on three applications, one of which was conceded to be simple, and not one of them got done. And if these applications are too complicated for the people who are currently on the application review committee... review committee, then perhaps we have to reexamine the, the composition of the application review committee and put people on the committee who can handle complicated applications.
Well, they can't because they're not qualified to do that. We can do just so much, and then the rest of it has to be done by the engineer. Nobody on this board is qualified to deem a thing like Tabby's Place complete.
That, that is your view, it is not my view.
Well, that's right, that's right. And since I know a little more about this than you do, I think making these kind of comments about us not being capable of doing something is not right.
You don't know what I know or don't know, Gail.
I know what you don't know, and that's this. You are not qualified to sit there and review something like that.
You don't know what I am qualified to do or not do, Gail.
I will provide a report of what I saw. I'll just pull the folder and then send it, and I'll send it to everybody, not to be responded to. I did say at the last meeting that the simple application of the solar was incomplete. And there are very specific reasons why it was.
Part having.
We are now out over a month from that last meeting, and I don't know that anyone has given a report to that applicant.
Can I ask a question?
May I, may I sort of step in here? I apologize for it. I believe you're, I'm the applicant.
Eric, we're not open to the public.
We're not open to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? You said the solar application was a simple one? Is that correct, Francis?
Yes, and I think I communicated to some extent with the applicant, Mr. Pearl, at the meeting, and then after the meeting was over, I was, shall we say, chastised out on the exit about different things that it was, I think if anybody were to look at it, you could see that things hadn't been, I signed or sealed. I will provide, Krista, the exact specifics because I had marked up the thing, and I will send it to you, and then you can share it with Eric. As far as a report on what the ARC would have, I'm a member. I was not the lead for that, and so I was deferring.
There wasn't any lead.
My, my question was going to be, i-if that was a simple application and the application review committee found it to be incomplete, my understanding then is that only complicated applications were going to be forwarded to the professionals. So my question is, why was that one forwarded to the engineer?
Well, that, the solar one was not forwarded to the engineer. Tabby's Place, I believe, was. I don't know.
All three were forwarded to the engineer, Francis, all three, including Mr. Pearl's, which means Mr. Pearl is now incurring expenses for our engineer to review his application, an application that you've just told me was a simple application and one that our ARC should be able to review.
And I did say that it was incomplete.
Francis, you did not prepare a report. The ARC did not prepare a report. You came to the meeting, you started spouting off in a very disjointed way, you started going off on tangents about the application. And to date, we still don't have a report, as far as I know, from either the ARC or the engineer, that we can hand to Mr. Pearl and say, here's what you need to do to complete your application. This, to me, is a very big problem. This is not what this planning board is about. It's not how we agreed it would be conducted. And I go back to where I've started, which is, if the application review committee is only going to deliver excuses, then we need to revisit the composition of the application review committee. And I will also comment that none of this is pointed at John Mills, because that was his first meeting. And so I would not expect him to be able to step in and get these applications done on his own.
Well, who said he had to? We were, we were helping him.
What I am saying, Gail, is you purport to have all this experience, 30 years of wisdom, I know nothing, then apply your 30 years of wisdom and get these applications done. You're very, you're very knowledgeable, Gail, when it's to your advantage to be knowledgeable. And when it's not to your advantage to be knowledgeable, like explaining why these applications.
Rick, knock it off!
That you're not.
Rick, Rick, can I, can I just say, Rick, can I say something here? Okay, a-as you know, I've been on these boards before. And I, I understand your frustration and everything else, but you have to understand, these are volunteer individuals who are also trying to make the township a great place to go. I don't think we need to go and, and go on everybody's back and belligerent them. I think what should be done is, everybody should be told exactly what is expected in these application boards. And Yolanda's came on to my thing, and I want to defer to her as being the attorney, too. I have a problem with a situation where in Raritan Township, we always gave it to our professionals, and the reason why we gave it to our professionals was because we did not want to have any of our planning board members being liable for making the decision of a complete application or a non-complete application. So I want to ask Yolana, is that a proper situation? There she goes again. Is that a proper situation with this? Because it, it seems like we're getting hostile amongst the board members here, and I'm having an issue with that, too, just sitting here and listening to this, you know, and hearing a lot of this for the first time. So, but my, again, our, my experience, and again, it was 20 years ago, but my experience is, the reason why in Raritan Township, we did not, we had a review committee. We had people that would look at the applications, and they would give their comments and say, we believe that this is not complete enough. But the engineer, who is insured against potential lawsuits, would make the final decision. And again, I, you know, I agree with Rick in, in a way, you know, you're trying to save money for the applicant, I always believe in that, too. But again, Yolana, my question is to you, is it proper for a review committee of people who are not certified in certain professional situations to make decisions on complete or incomplete? Isn't that supposed to be the planning board secretary?
Okay, how about this for a lawyer answer? Yes and no. Do you like that? Okay. Well, what I've advised in other towns, because, look, I, I have another town up in Morris County who also has numerous committees set up for this very purpose, because they're trying to save money for their applicants, because, you know, professionals, some are known to, you know, it takes a little bit far, and, and, you know, and, and their reviews are quite extensive. And in terms of looking at an application only for completeness, you can say that a board member could be prejudiced, but that's not why they're looking at an application, and they should not be discussing it with an applicant either. My advice has always been, is if a town is going to leave completeness determinations to planning board members, it's to choose planning board members that have a bit of experience in the field, first of all, and secondly, only to look at completeness items. And what is completeness? It's looking at the application and looking at the checklist and making sure everything is there. Once that happens, an application can be deemed complete. If you don't understand what's been given to you in an application, believe me, some of us professionals don't understand what's been given in an application, because people are always very clear in what they submit. But if they comply with the application and the checklist, then it can be deemed complete. And my advice would be for a review committee, like the application review committee, who's only looking for completeness, not be looking for anything else. Now, the concern becomes when certain planning boards, and my understanding, in East Samuel, this has happened in the past, and I know it's happened in some of my other towns, where they have committees that actually meet with applicants. I caution you to not do that. That is my yes and no answer. Because if you're dealing with a D variance and you're a combined board, you know that for any use variance application, or for any standalone bulk variance application, that's a zoning board application, the Class 1 and Class 3 members cannot participate. And at that point, you are acting in a judicial capacity and should not be engaging the applicant. Now, if you're reviewing a site plan application, a straight site plan application with no variances needed, a straight subdivision application without variances needed, even the municipal land use law provides that a planning board can designate a subcommittee to deal with the applicant, to talk the applicant through certain things, but not when you're dealing with variances. So that's, that's my advice, that's my two cents, that's what I've advised boards.
Okay, so I, I want to make a suggestion, and that after the review committee meets that night, they are to contact the planning board secretary that night after they're done with any concerns that they have. And then it's now into the planning board secretary's hands, knowing where it's been complete or incomplete, to then notify the rest of the board and the engineers going forward. I mean, that's my suggestion.
Well, and that's exactly how it's supposed to, to work. That, that's what we talked about when we set up the application review committee.
Again, you have people, like I said, you have people who are not experienced in doing different things, and I think, you know, just, I think we all should calm down, and we all should take a look at this and, and learn from mistakes and, and go forward, and that, there's, when you have your committee, your, your review committee, there's one person designated to contact the planning board secretary right afterwards, and they assume that that is the way it is supposed to be, and we will have no issues of this going forward.
Yeah.
And I think that's just, you know, the way it's, where it should be, because, again, we've, you know, Gail has been on, like she said, for 30 years. You know, I know Francis has done this in the past, and, and John Mills was learning, and I'm quite sure, and I wasn't there, but I'm quite sure that John was being told, you know, the procedures going through, and that's why delays maybe some applications, too. I'm not talking for John, but I'm assuming that's what happened. But I don't want to just see our board here and, and the community, our, our committee fighting amongst ourselves when I think it's a simple solution as to what needs to go forward. And if, if they don't, and if the review committee doesn't adhere to that and doesn't give to the planning board secretary right after the meeting their concerns, then I agree with Rick at that point. But that's where I think it should go. That's just my alternate one opinion.
Seems reasonable?
Yes.
It's silent.
Okay, and can I just add one more thing? If you are going to continue with an application review committee, and you are going to have the application review committee actually looking at completeness and looking at, at applications in that manner, the board secretary, and I appreciate the, the comment before that this should go to the board secretary immediately, because there should be one point person who is writing the letter to the applicant. It's important, it's important to advise the applicant that either they're being deemed complete or deemed incomplete, because if they're complete, the, the clock starts. If they're incomplete, it stops the clock, and that's important in terms of, you know, automatic approval somewhere down the line. So that, that is a good comment, and I do make that suggestion to all my boards.
Yeah, with the, are we using the new checklist yet, Krista?
I'm sorry?
Are we using the new checklist yet?
I just, I have no idea.
Oh, that's, that's right, okay. Well, the way the new checklist is set up, it is the planning board secretary, the, the planning board administrator, who ultimately deems it complete after everybody else weighs in, who's supposed to weigh in. And it's, as, as I said, it's supposed to start with the application review committee. If they can complete the, they're part of the, the completeness review, they tell the planning board administrator. If not, it goes to the professionals, whoever need, whoever reviews it is supposed to sign off, and then all of those sign offs go to the planning board administrator, who then, you know, either deems it complete or incomplete. That's how it was set up.
Tam, has the new checklist been adopted by ordinance?
Yeah, Rick, it had second reading, didn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
If it has, it should, then that's what should be, be used.
That's what people should be using, exactly.
That's the law, that's the law.
Oh, we haven't seen it.
Mr. Pearl's application was put together and it was submitted under the old process because it's sort of predated that passage.
Okay.
The forms and stuff that Krista had put together and just passed along.
Okay.
Mr. Pearl has been raising his hand, and I know we're not open to the public, but he is one of the applicants. Do we want to let him speak or not?
Yes. Yeah, so let's let him speak. We'll open a motion.
Wait.
Hang on, I want to hear from Yolanda, please. Yolanda?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Gail. I was going to ask you to ask the board to make a motion to open up public comments.
Okay, but I have a motion.
I will go to the public to allow Mr. Pearl.
A second?
I'll second it.
We have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Pearl.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it, and I apologize, but particularly in light of this, the recent discussion, was present at the March 11th meeting, and Mrs. Gavigan, thank you for your comments afterwards, was told that your comments would be turned over to the engineer, and I would be waiting for the communication from the engineer on the completeness of my, completeness of my application. I received the email from township engineer last Friday, April 3rd, relevant to, to give me, you know, information on the completeness or the incompleteness of the application. It was a little bit frustrating, waiting all of that time for the municipal engineer to communicate completeness of the application, to edit five days ago. As I said, was a, was a little bit frustrating. And so I understand, or I understand the communication that I just heard, or the conversation that I just heard, but I'm not sure the municipal engineer, the township engineer, was on the right sort of time track that the committee, the planning board thinks that the municipal engineer was on. Thank, thank you.
Mr. Pearl, if, if we're able to hear your application in May, will that give you enough time to get done what you need to get done in order to get your credits?
Rick, I am, I am not sure. I believe so, but I think that it will be done, I think that it will be because of the coronavirus delays that have given me a little bit of leeway and a little bit of flexibility with the credits, with the programs.
Okay. Do, do we have, do we have any reason to believe at this point that we will not be able to hear that application in May?
I don't.
Is that a question for me?
No, I'm asking that to, to, I guess, Gail, and I don't know if Krista really knows at this point, because she's just stepping in for Maria, but has anybody talked to Bill Burr?
I haven't seen anything, I haven't seen the incompleteness or anything from Bill Burr.
Okay, I, I, we have to, we have to reach out to Bill tomorrow and tell him to get us this ASAP. And I'm happy to do that in my capacity as mayor, but I think, Krista, you should also email him. This needs to get done. Okay, Mr. Pearl, was there anything else you wanted to say? Otherwise, we're going to close to the public.
No, that's, you know, that's fine. I, as I said, I, following up Mr. Burr's email to me on Friday, I'm looking to complete those pieces of the application, but as I said, to have waited until Friday, April 3rd for a April 9th, or an April 8th planning board meeting was a little bit, was a bit tough. thank you all for your consideration.
I share your frustration, but you probably sensed that already. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Gail, do you want to close to the public?
Is there a motion?
I'm moving to close to the public.
Okay, I take, one of you made the motion, one seconded, because I heard two voices at the same time.
Francis and I made it and seconded it.
Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, if there isn't any more discussion on the vouchers, is there? Because if not, I'd like to have a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
I'll move to approve the vouchers as presented.
Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, well, that seems to be it. We're at the adjournment portion. So could I have a motion? Oh, that was quick, okay, second?
Voice quick, yeah.
I'll second.
All right, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, good night, everyone.